Follow the meeting to order, meeting of the Carver Select Board on Thursday, September 26th. Please stay -- this meeting's being cable cast by Area 58 Community Access.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Bellman, can you do the prayer?
Almighty God, we pray your blessing as we concern our life with the opportunity to serve our community. Enhance us with your Spirit of dignity and selflessness. May we become instruments of support and understanding as we seek to bring an environment of trust and purpose among all who provide the many services that make us all what we can be. Help us achieve the goals of our commitment in this office that is now our responsibility, and especially, we lift our prayers for all the citizens of our community that we have been allowed to serve. They may discover the fullness of joy of life that we all seek. And keep those serving in our armed forces and our first responders in our hearts and thoughts. Amen.
Just before going to the Town Administrator update, I just want to mention we're having this meeting now. We may close early and then we'll reconvene because at 7:00 we're having a joint meeting with the school committee. So I'll just mention that at the outset. Town Administrator update?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, if I could, I'm gonna just...
Point of order, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
It only says Town Administrator update. I don't think that's specific enough to tell us what's actually gonna be discussed or the public to know what's gonna be discussed, and then give them the opportunity to come here and hear what's being discussed.
It is typically all that's mentioned in most of the...I mean, sometimes there is a list of additional items included in our regular agenda, but more often than not, additional items come up during the Town Administrator update.
But the board has been called to the carpet before on not giving enough information in the agenda.
So, Mr. Chairman, if I could, this is the standard language that I use on the agenda when the agenda's approved. Second, in the Town Administrator's update, we're not asking for any approvals. It's just for me to share information with the public as to what's going on, and there's some time-sensitive issues that I felt appropriate that I just wanted to provide an update. We're not looking for deliberations or votes, just for me to provide updates. Again, I don't list everything out, never have, nor will I, because I don't know exactly what I'm gonna say every meeting.
Let's...I'm gonna go ahead and allow it tonight, but I would ask you to double-check with Town Council and report whether or not doing so complies with the open meeting law.
And just for that, Mr. Chairman, we've never been had an infraction for this language.
I understand, but let's...
But I will check on that.
Let's just make sure that it's...we're not violating protocols.
Yes. So let me just get started with the two items that are specified on here, and that is the solar updates. Right now, we have some additional solar projects that are going through the pipeline. One hasn't been approved. One will be approved shortly. And again, your votes are always contingent upon the projects being approved. Certainly, it's important for us to have this information as we prepare for the budget, which is why we were able to put it into this meeting which you were having beforehand. So what we have here at 340 Tremont Street is a 10-megawatt DC solar system with eight megawatts...
Just to be clear, are you moving out of the Town Administrator notes now to the next item on the agenda?
Oh, I'm just doing it altogether.
I'd rather take it separately. You guys listen.
Okay. We'll go back to the Town Administrator update. Then let me start with first stating that apparently last night, there was some vandalism that occurred over at the new police station site where we have been prepping the site. We were very fortunate to have a lot of donations from people, and one of those was an excavator. That excavator was donated by Mr. Gary Garretson in a way of trying to help the town reduce down some of its cost. Apparently, someone or some individuals decided to take a brick cement slab and throw it through the side window of the excavator. We don't know why someone did that. We don't know why that vandalism has happened. It's disgusting, given that this is a donation from somebody loaning their equipment to the town, trying to help the town reduce money. I'm so annoyed by it that I've already stated I'm gonna pay for the window, because I'm not gonna give someone the satisfaction of trying to impact our budget. The police are looking into this, and if that individual wants to...is looking for some fame and notoriety, I'm sure the police could help him or her if they want to, you know, come and confess to their action. So that's first item. Second item is that there is an auction scheduled in three weeks, as been stated accordingly. In that auction, Mr. Townsend and I had the privilege of meeting with 28 individuals earlier this week that live off of Cranberry Circle for a parcel that's a little over an acre at the end of the site. We are working and have a consensus that we're looking to work with council to split that parcel up, sell a third of the parcel by fee, which one or two neighbors would bid on that isn't part of the community. It is proposed to be advertised so that individuals can purchase a fee easement for access in those properties. It's anticipated that that fee easement would sell for $250 and then give people deeded rights to that parcel. Tied into this parcel is the intention would be to bring this to annual town meeting and then have the fee piece actually turned over to recreation. So as part of this, when the title was reviewed by tax title attorneys several years ago, there was no notice, nothing recorded on this parcel by the developer of the site. And that's where the problem started, and that's where the problem ends. And because of that, there was no notice to the town that anyone had any use rights to the property. As we've looked at many people's deeds in that area, some do not have any use access to that parcel. Some have use access to that parcel stated in their deed, but it's not on the deed of the parcel in question. And each one of the deeds that we've seen all have different language. It was very sloppy how that recording took place decades ago, but again, I think through Selectman Townsend's effort, I think that...and I know, because all the residents that were there, 28 of them, were very pleased with the outcome and supportive of the solution. Again, I'm working that through Town Council. If we can do that, everyone's happy. If not, we'll have to go into Plan B and see how we can accomplish that through other Third is that I want to just mention that the Recreation Committee is moving forward with advertising its process for people that are looking to donate to the playground area for the new playground. They had a meeting last night and discussed that, and have been working on letters to send out. If it's okay with the board, I'd rather have Mary Ross tell you that than me, but if you don't want her to do that, I can certainly add in the detail.
The board's opinion? Okay. All right. Name and address, please.
Mary Ross, 40 Great Meadow Drive, Carver. Thank you for letting me speak. We have formulated a letter to go to businesses, residents, all the leagues in town. I have one for each of you, explaining what the fundraising would be for. It's to...we are hoping to raise some funds to guarantee that we have all port in place surface. It is really what the state is encouraging everyone to go to. It is the most...children who just are riding in a stroller, you know, a toddler or something. It's much easier to push through the process, through the playground space. We have an attached playground donation commitment form, and just something so that we could then make sure that we have a guarantee of who it's from, and if it's...if they're buying one of the bricks to go and continue the walkway around with the 159, is that what we said, something like that? Existing bricks from the prior playground. We're gonna hopefully add to those. And this way, we can communicate back with absolutely everyone. There is absolutely no commitment, but I thought before they went out to the public that it was only right that you all had a look at it and a vision for it. We, as you all know, we've put in many, many hours, such as the previous committee had done when they created one, and we're very excited. Some of the equipment has arrived, and we're expecting more any day, and hopefully it's all gonna work out and be a wonderful space.
Mary, just the donations is for beyond the resilient surface, is for other things on the playground?
Yes, yes.
Whole complex.
And the bricks would go on the walkway, and we're asking $100 for those. But if someone contacted us and said they could only afford 50, of course, we would take it. But...and then anything that would be a donation of $1,000 or more would have a plaque on the piece of equipment, as was done before. I'm not sure what their numbers were, or if it's in combination with other people. We have preserved all the original plaques. We're meeting to design how we are going to incorporate those, perhaps all in one giant sign honoring all the people who donated in the past. The pieces that we could save, we are reusing in the new playground. And the old equipment has been donated, and we...I will be picking up a donation the beginning of the week for...we donated to Shady Acres. And they were very, very excited, and they need to buy poles and things like that, because things that were, you know, in cement, we couldn't salvage. And I don't know that there was anything else. No gift is too small, and, you know, we just want people to feel more ownership like they did with the other playground, you know? And sometimes contributing helps people feel that, that they own a piece of it.
Thank you. And you say you have copies for us?
Yes, I do.
Might as well take advantage of the opportunity.
Did you have any questions?
No. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Off to CPC.
So, Mr. Chairman, moving on to the solar projects...
Mary, I'm sorry. You forgot your CPC stuff. They're on the bottom. Sorry. No, I was hitting on the bottom.
So, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, we have two more solar projects that are...
Are we done with the Town Administrator update now?
We are.
Okay.
Three items.
Want to be clear.
Yep. So moving forward to the solar projects, and to be specific, and this will require a vote from the Board of Selectmen, we have two more solar projects that have progressed. One has been fully permitted, the other's in its final approval process, and I anticipate that being approved in the next couple of weeks.
Which is which?
The 340 Tremont has been approved. The 60 Rochester is still in process. With the planning board, I think they have one more meeting. So what I would be doing is, when you make your motion, it's subject...your vote is subject to these being approved. The purpose why I needed to get these done now is we're in the process of preparing our budget, and we want to identify what revenue is known that's potentially gonna be coming in. So with this, the 340 Tremont Street project is a 10-megawatt DC solar canopy with eight megawatts of battery storage. That's gonna generate annually $191,000, $191,180 in annual tax revenue for 20 years. So it just shy of $200,000. The next one, 60 Rochester Road, is a 3-megawatt facility with a 2-megawatt battery storage facility, and that's gonna generate $57,354. So in total, you're looking at about a quarter million dollars between these two solar projects. This would then, with the ones that you have recently approved this past year, I think there were six of them, this'll move us to have about $937,711 in annual solar revenue coming in. This is a huge number compared to many towns. And now, just for clarification, this is at full build. These are the numbers at full build. They're not open today. They're not gonna be open tomorrow. The money starts coming in once they connect to the live grid. Some of these will be up and running that you already approved will be up and running by the tail end of this fiscal year, so will go into next year's receipts. Some of them will only be in production for half a year next year, so we'll have to make some modifications to our budget. Assuming they were all online as of June 30th, then $310,006,000 and change, $316,000 and change would be added to the operational base of the tax revenue based upon your formula. Again, a very big number compared to our small operating budget, and I anticipate that we may have a few more coming in, but we're nearing the window of capacity that where these are financially feasible based upon the current rebates and credits that are eligible through the state.
And the monies are gonna be distributed according to the manner that we've decided to divide the proceeds?
That's correct. So one-third, about $312,000 and change, will be going into each one of those categories.
And the contracts are...
Identical to...
Identical to all those that we have voted in the past?
That is correct.
No twists, no turns, no additional amendments or exclusions or clauses?
Nope. All identical.
Questions from the board?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Just so the members of the public know, could we identify the three categories the money will be going to?
Yes. The three categories that are in the financial plan is category one is for unfunded liabilities, which includes OPED and pension. We'll be talking about pension a little bit more later tonight. That's the first of the third categories. The second category is for the replacement or repair or reconstruction of the middle high school, setting up a sinking fund for that project. And then the third is for reduction in the capital stabilization funding that this would then...this would offset that, which then means that money would then stay in the operating budget.
Pays off debt, which frees up additional money.
Well, it doesn't pay off debt. It just means that where there was tax revenue of $312,000 out of our budget going into the stabilization, this money will now go into the capital and debt stabilization, so that money doesn't have to go in there.
Those are the three categories.
Yes, I have one. Do we have site plans?
Do we have site plans? No, we don't approve the projects that's done in the permitting departments.
I understand, but usually we get some sort of sheet that shows us where things...
I've never brought one here for site plan review in all the ones I've done.
We do them for telephone, you know, telephone polls.
I'm not denying that. I'm just saying I've never brought one in in all the solar projects that I've done with the board, because this is all financial. The site plan's all done. We have no jurisdiction on the site plan.
Well, it'd be nice to know where exactly they are. That's all I'm saying.
Can you...could you obtain the specific information as to where they're gonna be located and pass it on to the board?
Sure.
Thank you.
Is there a motion to approve?
I move we approve both.
There a second?
Second.
Subject to final permits.
Should we take them separately? Can they be taken as...
They can be together, as long as there's a word in there, "subject to final permits."
Okay. Motion made and seconded. Further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, on the 340 Tremont Street, one of the abutters has a business. It's a helicopter business, if I remember correctly, correct? And will this project put him out of business due to the fact that he can't fly over a solar project?
I believe that statement has no factual basis to it. We have never received anything from FAA, nor has the planning board received anything from FAA that prohibits where a helicopter pad can fly his helicopters. There's nothing that's gonna prohibit him from flying.
I think we should wait on this to actually get the information from the abutter to find out if it will or won't, and the information from the abutter about any type of a flight patent issue that he may put him out of business. I think that's just some due diligence that we need to go through to make sure, before I go ahead and vote for this.
Isn't there a hearing on this where the abutters would have the opportunity to address the issue?
There have been multiple hearings on this. The planning board has reviewed it ad nauseam, and the complaint that the helicopter pilot is saying is that it would impact his crash zone. And as my understanding, again, the planning board has reviewed this. That's their job to do that. They've gone through that analysis, and it's my understanding they have not been able to find any regulatory board or agency to back up the claims that are there. As we know, that unfortunate business is struggling because it used to do a lot of hauling for the Cranberry business, and the Cranberry business is down, and they're using very limited helicopter operations. Again, it has been discussed by the planning board. That individual has presented time and time again, and it's my understanding has not been able to provide any substantiated claims or backup to his claims. Again, anyone can say anything, it's just can they prove it?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
First, a question to the Town Administrator. The 340 Tremont Street, that's the one that's been approved by the planning board, correct?
That's my understanding, yes.
So that, you know, that is...the land use and everything else falls under the planning board. All we are being asked to do is to approve the financial plan and the pilot program. That's our total jurisdiction. We can't interfere or stop somebody's project if the planning board's already done it. It's outside of our jurisdiction. So I respect Mr. Bellman's request, but I strongly feel we should go ahead and vote both of these.
Mr. Chairman, discussion?
With that being said, is that we also have a duty to go ahead and make sure that the decisions that we make are in the best interest of the town, all right, and all of our town employees and town residents, okay? So just because it's gonna bring $191,000, I don't feel comfortable doing that. There's no rush right now to get this done and resolved today. All I'm asking is, let's get the neighbor to come in, give us the information, and present it to us, and then come back and say, okay, fine.
Again, Mr. Bellman, through you, Mr. Chair, with all due respect, again, that is not the position and the authority of the board. That's why we have a planning board. If he had a problem with that, he should be going...the individual should be going to the zoning board of appeals. We are looking at...and you even stated, for finances. The pilot program concerns the finances of the town. Everything else has been looked at, and then if you'd like to bring it up to the planning board, but I don't think we have any authority over the planning board.
I'm not saying...
And the thing is...
I'm not saying with you.
You know, there's been enough complaining before that the selectmen should be doing more and taking more control, but I'm sorry, I affirm believer that the planning board has their business. Zoning Board of Appeals has theirs. ComCon has their area, and what we're being asked to do tonight has nothing to do with that. That has, you know, they could go back in the planning board because we have the phraseology, pending full approval by the appropriate boards and licensing. So I see no reason to go ahead, with all due respect, not to go forward with approving the pilot program portion of this.
So if I may, Mr. Chair, I think Mr. Bellman understands the financial angle here. I think he has the right to ask the question.
And I'm not saying he didn't, and I had the right to go ahead and express my views, Ms. Hewitt.
And I respect them, I do. All I'm asking is, does we wait till the next meeting, and then we vote on it then? The other one's not...hasn't been approved yet.
I guess I'd ask a question, Bob. Let's say the gentleman comes in and tells us the same thing that he's told the planning board, but cannot produce any regulatory or statutory requirement or that would cause this, what he's claiming would be the problem. I mean, he had to go through that with the planning board. So are you saying you would overrule the position of the planning board in...
I have no authority, Mr. Chairman, to overrule the planning board, but I do have a vote on this board relative to having to fund this pilot program here for the town. So...
So the alternative would be you would not fund the pilot program, but they could still move forward with the solar program?
I'm just looking for a week to get the information from the resident.
Actually, it would be Tuesday. That's our next meeting.
So, Mr. Chairman, if I could, again, to put this in perspective, is the issue that's being brought up is that the helicopter pad owns a parcel of land. Nothing's impacting that parcel of land. There's a development on abutting property that the helicopter pilot has no authority or no ownership or no control over, and therefore, one owner can't impact another property for their development that's there. Again, the point being is this has been discussed ad nauseam by the planning board. They've given all due diligence. They've asked for documentation. Nothing can be produced. And right now, I'm in with our finance team trying to put together the annual budget, which is why I asked to put this on the agenda and why to have a meeting early, so that we can move forward with finalizing our budget. And yes, a week, two weeks, three weeks, having a discussion on this does impact staff schedule, and we're trying to get everything together.
I guess my question is that if there's an FAA violation here, I would think it would be fairly simple to just demonstrate that he has requirements he has to meet, and this would not allow him to meet those requirements. So I'm not sure...I can't imagine the planning board was so callous as to just ignore what he presented to them.
Well, as somebody who's flown in helicopters numerous times, okay, I personally, if I was going to crash, I'd rather crash in a Cranberry bog than on top of a solar project, to be totally honest.
Well, how do you know where you're gonna crash?
I think the issue there is that if the owner had a concern with that, they could have bought up hundreds and thousands of acres in their flight plans in any direction.
Well, we're getting this right here.
Mr. Chairman, with all due respect, you know, as I said, you know, I don't think this doesn't...that part of it doesn't pertain to us, you know, that's the planning board. I ask that we move the questions, please.
Mr. Townsend, I just wanna...I really don't think we have any authority to overrule what the planning board has done, but I guess I don't see what the harm would be in waiting a couple of weeks and allowing someone to come in and present their arguments to us. So I personally think we should put this off and to the next meeting and give the abutter...
Mr. Chairman, our meeting...
Give someone a chance to get a discussion with us.
Sorry, Mark. I'm just asking for a week. I'm not asking for two weeks.
We may not meet next week. There's not a lot that was beefy on the agenda. We'd be meeting just for this item, probably.
But even if we put it off until the next meeting at the 15th of October...
I think we're setting a dangerous precedent second guessing the planning board's work. We're telling them, we don't think you have done your job, and we are going to determine whether you did or not, and I think that's a dangerous precedent.
Mr. Chairman?
Excuse me.
I'm sorry.
You're saying that the planning board heard this resident, dismissed his claims, and so therefore, you want to hear his claims to determine whether you think they're valid, and I guess you would then at that point say, I refuse to fund this, and basically be doing the job of the planning board?
That's not true. I just wanna have that ability, because I don't think the planning board...
You're asking him to present us what he presented to the planning board, and then we will make a determination as to whether there's a planning board violation or not.
That's a good point. No.
That...please explain to me what...
I wanna hear what he has to say here in front of me.
I think you have already...already, you've already obviously spoken with the person because you were aware that it was a violation.
Like you said, I wanna see documentation, all right, to back up the claims.
Do you think if he had documentation which stated that he cannot have a solar field next to his location, that he would not have presented that to the planning board?
I'm not sure. I wasn't there at the planning board hearings.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
With all due respect, I'll ask either you or the Town Administrator, if someone has a complaint with a decision of the planning board, is the next avenue then the zoning board of appeals?
Actually, the person has standing to two things. One is, Mr. Townsend, this will impact our budget process by delaying this. I'm just gonna tell you that.
Okay.
We have staff working on that. If you want to do it, that's a policy decision of the board. Secondly, if the abutter, who has legal standing, is unhappy with the planning board, he has legal recourse. The proper procedure for that person to do would be to... to appeal the decision of the planning board. Not to adjudicate it with the board of selectmen, because the board of selectmen has no control over what the planning board does. It would be in proper form for that to happen. He would go through the normal process that any abutter has with a project that's approved by a neighboring, a budding process.
That's a reasonable point. Okay. That's fine. Further discussion?
I just have a quick informational question. And that's, I understand the panels are going to be, the smart panels, so they're going to be very high. And I'm just wondering if the, I'm assuming it's the owner at 60 Rochester Road who has the cranberry bogs, will they still be able to grow cranberries if they wanted to? Or don't we know that?
If they're using dual use, they would still be able to do that. That's what the dual use by definition is.
Okay. Good. That's good to know.
And again, this is promoted by the cranberry growers.
Yeah.
Any further questions or discussion? Being none, those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Vote was four to one. That brings an end to the select board agenda. Ask for a motion to close our meeting, to reopen shortly, to meet with the school board?
So moved.
Second.
Further discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Ready to go?
Yeah, we ready to go.
I'll let you gamble together first.
Okay, Paul's meeting, Council Committee--
I'd use a microphone if I needed.
Hello? I was in the hall. I didn't think I needed it. I took call. This meeting of the Council Committee together, tonight, in session tonight, sorry, September 26th.
I'll call the board of selectmen back together. On Thursday, September 26th, that's 7:07.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
All right, so who's going to run the meeting? We'll go with Mr. Neef.
All right, so our first gen item is--
Because he's not Mr. Milonowski.
Our first gen item is budget transfers. And actually, I'm going to turn that over to Brad Brothers and Meg LeMay, who are going to talk about it.
I want to make--
Meg can even take my seat if she wants.
Meg, you have one, right? You're good. All right, so as you guys know, the last, is it, is it year three, Michael, already of the combination of technology? And is it year two or three?
It's year three, but two since we've kind of really had it geared up.
Totally merged them.
It's the third year in practice, but the second year budget.
Okay. So, how this works is, when we budget, we look at what we would have proposed and what would have been in the school budget, and what actually gets shuffled over to the town. So, how this happens is, when we design our budget, we have kept in both our two building operators and the groundskeeper in our operational budget. And they actually get charged to the town. They run off the town payroll. And we do a journal entry for them between their salaries, their overtime, the clothing allowance, their health insurance. All of that gets journal entryed over. Same thing with Dave in his position, and then Stephen as the technology director. Most of his money actually resides in the town, and that gets journal entryed over to the school side. We'd love to get--
Brad, you're saying journal entry for everybody. That means that that's additional administrative work that Brad and Meg are doing to transfer funds, making, you know, deductions and deductions, going back and forth, and just processing things mid-year, every month, quarter, whatever it may be.
Yep. And how Desi works on our side for function codes is, this hits about seven function codes on our end. And it leaves room for error, not that there ever has been error, there is error, but it leaves a possibility open for error. What I'd like to propose is, we just move the money over once and for all for facilities, for the town, and then the school will take on the money for technology. And how that works out is, if you guys follow along from left to right, the three on the left, their salary is 142, 272. The overtime estimated is 1,005, 15. Clothing, 1,500. And then health, just over 20. For Dave, the school piece, the salary is 92. The health is 23. The clothing's 1 for that total right there. And then for Stephen, the town picks up and sends the school 75. The health is already in the school, and the travel's in the school. So, when you balance all of that out, that gets shuffled between accounts, you have a net move from money from the school to the town of 207, 626. That is the amount we'd like to shuffle over in all budgets moving forward from the school to the town. What this does is, as you guys know the formula, how it works out right now, the school gets roughly 70 percent, the town takes 30, after you take off all the fixed expenses. We'd like to move that money over officially. And what that does for the number is, that makes the school share now 69.688 percent. It would make the town 30.312. And then, all of those positions would be set in our budgets respectively. In terms of, technology would now be fully in the school. And facilities, for the positions that were moved over under the town contracts, will now be under the town budget.
But it would still be joint management of both positions.
Correct. That would not change.
It does not change any services. It's exactly as it's always done.
And it's money moves you're making anyhow.
Correct.
Transfers and--
There's no net loss percentage-wise to either budget. It just makes accounting much more efficient and accurate for the finance folks, which is, it's their recommendation. And again, they're recommending and stating, and Scott and I are in agreement. Even though the percentages change, because the responsibility has been reassigned, the net sum doesn't impact either party.
Basically, just an easier way, in a cleaner way of taking care of it.
Brad and Meg, how many times do you have to get together to make these transfers between the town and--
Too many.
Well, I mean, it's, the journal entry itself would be once per year, but we've had to keep revisiting this and like, making sure that we addressed it. And then, when we go to do budget season, we'd have to come up again, okay, what, what is going to be the salary for this position? What's the health insurance for this position? So, it's, in terms of projecting the next year's budget, and then it's the following year, having to do the journal entry again, and having to remember, the two of us, at a time when we're trying to close out the books, Brad's trying to do his end of year reporting, I'm trying to do my end of year reporting, to have to remember to do these journal entries. I mean, right now, what I've got it on is a task scheduler, so it'll pop up reminding me. But the other thing, too, is it just, it creates a door for error. Anytime you have to, to have to remember to do something and do a journal entry rather than being programmed in, it opens the door to error.
And Andy, one more thing. In addition to the transfer, every time they discuss it, they provide backup documentation like this, that they have to go through and analyze. And that takes, you know, a couple of hours to do stuff like that. So, you know, it is a savings on both sides. And again, we're just showing, this is inefficient, the way we're doing it right now. This just makes it more efficient, and there's no loss to either party.
How does, how does this affect the 70.3 and 29.7 that is in our fiscal policy?
So, with this vote, you guys would be agreeing to modify that vote to what's shown on the sheet, from 70.3 to 69.688, and then from 29.7 to 30.312. So, that's your six-tenths of a percentage point, you know, swing on here. But again, that responsibility and those staff things have been assigned to the other side.
Now, where do schools' custodians fit into this? Are they still under the school budget?
They're still on the school budget.
These are our two maintenance, the two maintenance staff that were originally in the school, now fall under the building operator, which is the town contract. So, that's another piece of this that we can't forget, is, the school essentially is trying to keep up with contracts that the employees no longer are under our contract. They're actually under the town contract. So, this would clean all of that up as well.
Yeah, we changed unions with those employees, and it also includes Dave Siegantoff.
Yep.
I just, I guess I'm just thinking from an operations, you know, and maintenance and so forth, at some point, are we debating the idea that, why not just pass the custodial staff over to the operations as well?
I'm going to jump in here and say that we're not ready for that. We don't know if that would make sense. The custodians actually provide a security component to the schools, too. Scott and I have been talking about--
Okay, that's why I was asking, whether--
Yeah, so I--
We're not ready to discuss that, nor is that on our agenda.
Yeah, right. Right now, my position would be, we'd want to maintain the custodians on the school side, from that whole concept of, they're part of our operations and part of our, really part of our safety and security network in terms of operating the building every day.
I hear you say that, and I understand.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Other questions from the board of selectmen?
So, you say the custodians are part of the security function of the school. I was noticing one of the things that I got from Meg, that there's a item in here about school security for a funding mechanism in here.
Is that what he would have already? What is it, what is the account description?
I'm going to find it.
And just a little caution, we want to be careful when we're talking security. We don't want to--
No, no, I know that.
Revelatory--
This is just a money, money article that was in this, that we got the other day.
It's from the other day. It wouldn't have been on there.
That's community preservation.
Yeah, but you went to that, you did that today. I'll have to find it in here. I know it's in here somewhere. Okay. Yeah, the only, the only piece that we have that's labeled school security, excuse me, is the journal entry for the additional police officer that we have in our buildings.
That's all we can say about that tonight.
All right.
We'll get into that, anything more than that.
And, and this is obviously the type of thing you could call Brad outside of a public hearing.
Okay.
Other questions from the board of selectmen, or select board?
Andy, will the school have any questions, concerns?
Okay.
Take a motion to approve the budget transfers?
And, Andy, and adopt the percentage--
Oh.
And adopt the percentage changes.
I'll make a motion to adopt the budget transfers and to change the percentage from, I don't have both of the percentages. Can I just say adopting--
Just a new one.
Adopting the new percentage of 69.688 percent for the school, to the town being 30.312 percent.
I'll second.
Motion in a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous?
It's the pleasure of the board.
I make a motion that we go ahead and approve the transfer and change the percentages to the school 69.688, to the town 30.312.
Second.
Further discussion? Being none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous.
So, you asked me to facilitate the meeting. The next two items, I guess, fall back to Mr. Milonowski and I think the, the select board.
If you can handle it, we--
But I'll do it. So, preliminary update on FY '21 budget, I will turn that to Mr. Milonowski. Unless I, unless I can give an update on my perceptions of the town budget.
Why don't you give the summary of it, then I give the detail?
No, no, it's okay.
Now, boys, don't hate.
So, as we all know, we have a 10-year projection. This is what staff is actually working on right now. And in this goes all inputs for new revenue, or reduced revenue, as well as expenses and significant changes from that. That goes through our fixed categories. Then at the end, that leaves the residual that's left for the town and the school to divide up by the percentages that were adjusted to them. So, so this discussion is going to be good news, bad news, and we're still in process of figuring out what all that means. So, let me start with, is, the select board tonight voted to move forward with two additional solar projects. Those two additional solar projects are going to net, at full construction, and I'm, and I'm going to come back what that means, at full construction, about $312,000 of new revenue going into our operating budget. To give you a perspective of that, last year for new revenue going into the budget, we had about $800,000. So, again, this is a couple hundred thousand dollars of new money that normally wouldn't have been there. Now, with that, now here's the full detail, is, that's been approved, and that'll go into effect the moment they flip the switch for the solar and battery facilities. Some will be completed before July 30, June 30th this year. Some will be able to put 100% of that money into next year's budget. Some will not be completed to sometime during FY '21. And therefore, based upon when they're anticipated to flip the switch, that many months left in that fiscal year, we'll be able to take that into account and put that into it. So, even though I've stated we should have $312,000, we will in year two. In year one, it's going to be something less than that, because cash flow, when they get turned away. That's the good news. And it's something that everyone has been working on to hopefully try to generate some additional revenue in the town. And we have a few more solar projects in the pipeline, but where they are in the permitting process, those wouldn't impact us until the 2022 budget. At some point, probably after that, there's not going to be any more massive solar projects in town, because we're going to max out with the credits and also the infrastructure that it's going to stop. So, we're taking advantage of this while we can. Now, that all being said, is that, that's the good news. Now, we have some other adjustments that have come in, and, you know, my expectation for this year was that we were going to hopefully exceed the 2.44% that we were able to secure last year in our operating budget. I don't know if we're going to do that. We're still striving to get to that point. But here's some of the challenges that we face this year. One, that we just received, and this falls into the category of expenses that are coming online that are different than last year and the previous years. And the first one has to do with pension. Pension, we just received, I think it was maybe a week ago, Meg, two weeks ago, an update, and Brad, an update for our pension this year. And the number that they're giving us, where we've been, the pension's been going down, you know, we still put X number of dollars in here. And what I'm talking about is the pluses and minuses. I'm not talking about the total value we're putting in here. It's the adds and the subtracts. That's how I'm having this discussion. So, I'm not going to get into whole numbers, because it's just, what's added, what's subtracted, what's different, the deltas. Is that, the pension is proposed to be $168,000 more this year than it was last year. And it's something that we did not anticipate would be happening, basically, given the last couple of years of trends that that's been going down with. Now, we do have some ways of hopefully mediating that, or mitigating that, but that's the initial number that kind of got us with the left hook this year in the budget process.
Mr. Milonowski, just to make sure everyone understands, we're under a state mandated pay down of our pension liability. And periodically, and is that through Plymouth County?
That is correct.
And periodically, they do a review to see how, what kind of progress the county is making.
Yep.
And as you say, recently, the trend has been, that it's been going down as we've been moving forward. And now, apparently, with a new calculation, the mandatory payment that we have to make in order to achieve the state's deadline, I think it was 2030?
2030, yep.
2030, we have to increase our contribution. And that was unexpected. So, that's, that's what we're talking about here.
Now, one other component with the pension system that's been highlighted in our audit for the last two years, that the board of selectmen have been trying to work with, with Plymouth County, is they pool all the money into one big pot, and then they divide by the act, the active people that are in there. And whereas other pension systems in the states, they do an actuary estimate on each individual community. We've asked for that. I want to tell you why we've asked for that. It's because historically, Carver pays less than some of our abutting towns. Like, a Duxbury may have a higher coal on average than Carver does. And we can prove that. But when everything's pooled together, in essence, as our auditor has advised us, we're paying, the communities are doing less of a coal increase, are helping pay the pension of the communities with the larger coal increase, because how it all blends together.
So, we end up subsidizing some of the more, the richer towns?
That's correct. And through the chairman's efforts with Mr. Clark, we were able to meet with the treasurer of Plymouth County, and he has shown us a workaround for that, which is going to be put into the budget, where if we pay down our piece of the pension a little bit more, then they're required to pull us out of the pool and do an individual calculation. So, that's the backdoor way of getting what we've been trying to do for the last two years, is we pay a little bit down, and then he has to do it separately. So, we're going to, we're going to work on that built into the budget process. So, so then, again, that was a, that was a change that happened from an expense standpoint. Anything else on that, Meg?
No, that was it.
Okay. Second, is that town meeting passed, and the voters approved, a senior tax relief act policy. And in there, that has a cap, that it can't go up more than half a percent of the assessed val, of the revenue, tax levy. That number comes in to $97,000. This is a new system. We haven't got it up and running yet. I mean, it is up and running. We've got some people that have come in to apply for it. Some of them find out they're not eligible for it. Some of them find out they're not eligible for it, but the maximum the town is required to pay them back up to five hundred dollars per person is ninety-seven thousand dollars in total. So that's an added expense that we have to incorporate into the budget process this year to account for that, that we haven't had to do in the past. Whether or not people fully take that or not, we don't know, and we're trying to find more information to see if we can not take the conservative route and budget all ninety-seven thousand. We can budget something less based upon what we think the demand's going to be. But I'm telling you what the conservative way to do it is, is you're obligating ninety-seven thousand dollars, whether people use it or not. If they use it, you need the ninety-seven thousand. If half of them use it, then you have. If none of them use it, you got nothing. But right now, we have a liability of ninety-seven thousand.
Does the excess, if it's not utilized, go into free cash the following year?
If the excess would, um...
No?
No, because what happens is what we'd have to do is put it into the overlay account, which is, like, in accounting terms, would be an account for bad debt. And so it just sits there in overlay, and the assess, the Board of Assessors would have to release that.
Okay.
For some other purpose.
And when they release it, it goes into the operational budget or to free cash?
Uh, it can be reassigned by town meeting.
Okay.
So... I'm sorry, Michael. When we were on the committee speaking about this, this, um, legislation, warrant article, one of the things we spoke about was that money was going to be coming from the overlay. A lot of it was, a lot of it's going to be, was going to be coming from the overlay funds. How much of that, Meg?
So it has to be put into the overlay to pay for it.
Oh, it's not, it wasn't, it wasn't money that was already?
There is some residual money in the overlay that's there, but again, that's one-time money, so now you're looking at operational money. Every year, it's ninety-seven thousand dollars. There's not money coming out of that every year for ninety-seven thousand dollars. So we're trying to balance how that's going to play here, but from a budgetary standpoint, we have to budget an additional ninety-seven thousand dollars of new revenue in there unless we can do some offsets.
Okay.
So... Would we, would we reach a point where, once, let's, let's say sixty-seven thousand is being used, and that seems to be a steady number? And if we're putting ninety-seven to the overlay every year, um, they could almost start releasing X amount of dollars every year, knowing that the full amount's not being utilized?
So hypothetically, let's just use this number and say it's ninety thousand, and we have a third of the people using it, so we got thirty-two thousand dollars every year for the last three years is doing it. We would budget forty thousand dollars, not ninety-seven, and we'd add forty thousand dollars because we'd have a trend to say that's what the number is. Right now, I have no trend, so I have to look at the worst-case scenario of ninety-seven. We don't, we're not, we don't believe we're going to get ninety-seven thousand, but I'm just, part of this meeting is I have to give you the full story. I'm giving you the worst-case scenario. We're going to work through this to do that. You know, whenever a new policy is approved, it has consequences. Where to pay go system, if we're going to pay for some benefit for seniors or veterans, it has to come from someplace else. Again, good program, not talking about this not being a good program, and if we find out, I think it has to be revoked every three years too, if there's a problem with it. So, again, it's a testing.
So at this time, you're putting us on notice, and you don't know if you're putting in ninety-seven or fifty at this point?
That is correct. That's correct. We're still doing analysis of it.
Thank you.
Any other questions on that?
Are there any other funds that we have within our town that we can transfer into this process? Uh, whether it be grant funds or anything else that we could do temporarily?
Well, any type of grant funds are tied into restrictions on grant funds. Um, we obviously have our stabilization funds. Those take a two-thirds vote at town meeting. Uh, right now, your finance team is looking at options, and we'll come back to options, and then we can explore those later.
Because I did see there's a hundred and forty-four thousand dollars in a, uh, housing rehab grant?
Yep, can't touch that.
Can't touch that?
Nope. Grant, strings attached, can't touch it.
So that money could be used for other things, for rehab houses or what?
It has to follow federal government rules for CDBG funds.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, just real quick, uh, for maybe some good news, we haven't done a pilot program for the battery storage facility, have we?
Well, we haven't because it's not ready to go forward yet, but at some point, we will. We have that tied into our analysis. That will be, it's still a couple of years out.
Okay, but that is something that will be coming down.
Oh, yeah.
Give us some long range.
If we're looking long range, again, as I said, we just have a couple more solar projects coming. They're going to end, but we have that big battery storage project that was approved, and we're aggressively working on Route forty-four for development down there. There's some activity that's happening. Nothing's finalized yet. Nothing's going to impact the twenty twenty-one budget. Could something impact the twenty-two or the twenty-three budget? Maybe. But right now, I'm just dealing with twenty-one budget. But we have, we, I guess, just to your point, Alan, I'm, Alan's trying to say nothing's, it's not all doom and gloom. It's just working through this year.
Uh, additionally, wouldn't it be possible, uh, at, to, I know we have a policy now of where we designate the funds received from a solar project, uh, divides into three different, uh...
Yeah, what I would say is let's work through the numbers.
I'm, I'm just thinking down the road with another solar project, we could discuss the idea of perhaps directing it towards to help fund senior, senior tax relief to take the burden off of the operating budget.
But that gets us into one-time money with the solar, and we have to analyze that piece. But yes, anything's possible. It's just that, I, I'm just giving everybody where we are today and what the issues are that we're struggling with. So that's the expense changes. Now, um, as it relates to revenue. And, um, so with revenue, um, two things are happening. One is with the north, uh, with the, um, Carver, Marion, Wareham Regional Refuge District. And with that, the town, um, collected seventy-seven thousand dollars this past year approximately in, uh, privilege fees, uh, sticker fees. And the town kept that, and the town has, in the past, made, in the past couple of years, has made some payments to the district. This year, we're fortunate, we're not going to make those payments to the district, um, uh, but that seventy-seven thousand dollars is not going to be coming in for new revenue. In addition to that, uh, as part of some of the old agreements, is the town was able to charge a tipping fee for garbage that was being dumped at the facility. The town received about a hundred thousand dollars, uh, from that through, um, through the, the haulers. That will, uh, be going away for half of the year next year. So by December thirty-first, we're no longer going to be able to do that, um, and I'm not even sure we'll be collecting a full half of years of revenue for that number. So there's two pieces of revenue, a hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars, that aren't going to be coming into the town that, uh, we're going to have to address. From there, Meg, do you want to talk a little bit about the interest income?
Yeah, so, Arin?
Can I microphone, please, Meg?
Um, over the last couple of years, our investment income has been, uh, much higher because we had had the bond proceeds for, um, the middle school, high school, the police station, the library, which got transferred over to the police station. So we have had, um, investment income for, on the bond proceeds that has been much higher, but we can't build that into the budget because what would happen is as we spend out the money for the police station, the investment income will go, will go way down. So if you were to build that into the budget, um, you would have to make cuts later on. So we have to keep that low, much lower than what we've had in terms of actual collections.
And then, would you and Brad talk about Medicare, Medicaid, what the history that's been for reimbursements and what we're getting this past year?
I'm going to turn that over to Brad.
Yeah, so basically how, uh, Medicaid works is, I'll give you a quick summary version. A parent has to sign off on a waiver that lets them bill back, lets us as a school district bill back for Medicaid-eligible expenses. Realistically, I don't have an honest list of what qualifies. It's, it's pretty extensive, excuse me. And also on top of that, that list has now expanded where districts are expecting to get a lot more funds in. For Carver, I look back at history on it. I think like, maybe ten years ago, we took in twenty thousand. This past year, we dropped to forty thousand. The year before, we were in like a hundred twenty thousand dollar range. So there is a lot of fluctuation on that, um, but the biggest piece of this stems from, parent gets a big packet of information. We, we contract that with Reed's Collaborative. Reed's Collaborative actually sends that paperwork to parent. Parent has to sign and send back. A lot of times, it's, it's a, it's a big packet, and it's kind of scary for parents to look at it saying, oh my God, I'm going to lose any services that I actually qualify for. I don't want to sign off on this. And they have that fear factor. A lot of it is subsidizing or getting rid of that fear factor and getting them to sign that and return it to us so we can then, um, charge back for those services. Um, again, it's going to be up and down, but I think the changes this past year will allow us to qualify for more money, um, to bill back.
So just in terms of, of revenue, um, what we collected in the past ranged anywhere from a hundred thousand to a hundred and forty thousand, and then last year, it went down to forty-four thousand. So that's why we're looking to cut that in terms of our revenue, uh, projected revenue for FY twenty-one.
Meg, I think in our FY twenty budget, we had that programmed at ninety-seven or ninety-eight thousand dollars, budgeted?
Yeah, Ben, I was thinking more a hundred thousand.
It was a hundred, okay. So again, we had budget forecast, so when it was a hundred, it came in at forty. At sixty thousand dollars, that didn't come in in revenue that we anticipated. These are the things that we worked through, um, with our forecasting.
And just to add on to that, honestly, this is like a great tie-in to how special ed kind of operates for us, to be honest with you, because, um, you can see if, if we have one heavy IEP, let's say, that a lot of students do qualify for Medicaid on, for, and they go away, we lose a lot of funding that we received in. Same thing with special ed, uh, district tuitions, is there's such a big fluctuation on a year-to-year basis of what we get charged with and where kids move out that this kind of ties in with that of the back and forth on why it's, it's hard to actually budget hard numbers on that. But I think you guys do a trend history of three years for the projection on it, or five?
We do a trend history of three, three or five years and try to see what's more accurate, but the problem is, is with special ed is you could have a couple of students that come in and totally blow the number, the three or five-year average out of the water.
Absolutely.
I think another topic to talk about, um, and Brad, you, I guess there's two components here, uh, maybe Scott, let's talk about one of them. So Brad, why don't you talk about the charter school issue, because we bring that up all the time, and that's actually trending more positive. This is on the positive side.
Yeah.
So if you want to talk a little bit about that, so we can kind of...
Yep. So how charter school funding works in, is really is all based off estimates, and then actuals come in. So you guys have seen the cherry sheets that we get the last couple of years. It says we're going to send out a million dollars in charter school tuitions. That's based on projections of enrollment that charter schools actually send DESI, and that's what DESI calculates their assessment on. So what we've seen is, we've seen charter schools project ten more kids than what they actually are going to get in our terms, and DESI and DOR lock you into what's on that cherry sheet when we know it's not even close to actuals. Meg ran into the problem with, we're not able to play around with the numbers on that because DOR says you have to lock in what's on the cherry sheet. So therefore, it makes us budget a higher amount that we know we're never going to have the expense on, but it's locked in. So it, it hurts our numbers of having close to actuals, um, and we saw it last year. I think we finished, what, a hundred fifty thousand, somewhere in the ballpark of that?
It was, it was at least a hundred thousand dollars that, on the cherry sheet, they said that we need, that our charter school assessment was going to be X, and we ended up paying much less, but in order to get our tax rate approved, we had to put that number in, which means that, in terms of a balanced budget, that's what we had to have in there. And so we, it will close out the free cash, but the problem is, is it's closing out the free cash when it's money that we actually could use towards
Operational.
the operational budget.
Yep.
Yeah, what it is, is our forecasting process is more accurate than DESI, but DESI controls what we're getting for money through the cherry sheets. So it's kind of a catch-twenty-two, is they tell us what they're going to give. We know it's wrong based upon the data that we have, but there's nothing we can do about changing it, except that we try to massage that, uh, in the forecast and everything that we do.
And you guys remember too, when MAP Academy is, this is the perfect one, when MAP Academy first came on, how they did their original assessment was they were going to have a hundred twenty seats available for students, and they said Carver, Wareham, and Plymouth were going to be the sending districts. All they did on the, the cherry sheet was they divided it in thirds, um, and they assessed us for that number. And I remember, I called you saying, don't show this cherry sheet to anyone because it shows charter schools as one point six million dollar assessment to us. That's never going to happen.
Yeah, I think the first year, they ended up with, uh...
Three kids?
Yeah, for three or four kids, not, not forty.
Oops.
And, so recently, what, what we're seeing is projections of charter schools, not what the numbers actually are, when the, you know, once we run October first. So we get up, we, schools have to finalize their number on October first, then, and then they have to send us who's at their school by October thirty-first. So generally, in our November school committee meeting, we go through all the numbers of where every kid in Carver is. Well, I'll review that with the school committee of, and then we'll do changes. What was our, did we see an increase in charter school? Do we see an increase in homeschool? Do you see a decrease? Et cetera, et cetera. And we actually identify every student in Carver who's school-aged and where they attend school. But we don't, not, all that information isn't finalized until November.
Scott, do you want to talk a little bit too about, um, what's happening with changes in Chapter seventy and that stuff?
I'll, I'll start on this, and Brad can jump in if he wants to. So the current legislation that's before, um, the State House and Senate is actually a compromise bill that has, that has some positive aspects for us. In terms of our actual Chapter seventy-eight, I know we've talked with the groups before about this whole concept of held harmless, uh, because our student population has come down. So they've increased some of the aid and some of the formula for Chapter seventy for economically disadvantaged students, which we would receive some more money for, and, and actually healthcare costs, uh, but no, no, I'm going to tell you, they've adj, they have adjusted the formula. But the bottom line is we still haven't closed the gap of held harmless. So we're, Carver's not going to get more money. And that, the formula has been adjusted in the proposed bill. This legislation hasn't been passed yet. It's the legislation that's before the, the House and the Senate. I think it actually is being supported by the state superintendents. I believe it's actually being supported by the MTA. I think the bill is going to have widespread support. I think there's a chance that this legislation will go forward without a lot of, uh, changes to it. There's always going to be some amendments along the way, I'm sure, but then generally, what's, what's come out of the Joint Committee of Education, I think there's a real good chance that what's there is, is going to be pretty much what's going to happen in the next year. And, but that we're not going to close that hold harmless gap, so we're just going to get our general increase in per-student aid of above twenty-five or thirty dollars a student, uh, over the next several years. But there's two pieces of legislation that could be positive for us if it is to go forward. One is that they're going to reimburse, uh, in, in circuit breaker for transportation. Currently, special education transportation is not reimbursed as part of the circuit breaker process. That would be a benefit for us because we're paying for those costs of transporting students to different schools without reimbursement. The other thing that would be a positive for us if they, if it is enacted, is the legislation actually calls for fully funding, uh, the charter school formula, reimbursement formula. So right now, there's a formula that says in the first year, if a student goes to a charter school, you get a hundred percent reimbursement. Second year, you get sixty percent. Third year, you get sixty percent. Fourth year is...
I think it's only three now. I think they changed.
It's a hundred sixty-sixty? They actually changed that last year because it used to be four years and a lesser percentage. But that was subject to appropriations. So the formula said you get a hundred sixty-sixty, but then each year, the legislature would vote on it and not give you a hundred sixty-sixty. You know, they'd only fund that at fifty percent, or they'd only fund that at seventy-five percent, depending on the individual year. What's in the current legislation is it would not be subject to appropriation. Then it would be, uh, they would have to do the reimbursement as stated in the formula of a hundred percent, sixty percent, sixty percent, which again, would have some benefit for us. So those two things would be a real benefit for the district. You know, I, we can't put any real hard numbers on those, but those, uh, that would, that would be a positive movement in terms of legislation and in terms of, uh, monies, revenues that we could bring into the school district. I don't know if you have anything to add on that, or?
Just the transportation piece is huge on IEPs, just because sometimes the collaborative tuition, let's say, is forty thousand dollars. The transportations are thirty grand on top of it that we don't even qualify for right now. So on a case-by-case basis, this could bring in a significant amount of money for circuit breaker to us.
Yeah, the, the threshold is still the same. It's still
Forty-four.
Around forty-five thousand dollars. So the first forty-five thousand dollars, no matter what the cost is, whether it's school, transportation, would be on the school district. Everything above the forty-five thousand dollars, it's in that ballpark. It's, it's an exact number. And the reimbursement would, again, be seventy-five percent. Again, that's also subject to, uh, to, um, whether they're going to actually fund that. It's just appropriation. So sometimes they say it's seventy-five percent, but then they only appropriate sixty-five percent. Or generally, it's, it's, over the last, the trend would be between sixty-five and seventy percent is what they actually end up reimbursing that. But the transportation piece would be a, would be a true benefit to us if that legislation is passed, so we're, uh, supporting that right now.
So Brad, just out of a twenty-four million dollar school budget approximately, how much is transportation total? And how much of that is, um, um, for transportation of our local school buses in town?
So transportation total, I think, is one point one. I think my end-year report, might be one point two. And that includes depreciation on our vehicles. That's part of my end-year report expense. And what was the second piece of that? The overall?
How much of that one point two is, uh...
Transportation of our kids.
General education. Um, I want to say four hundred was special ed, so we'll leave you about seven hundred thousand, let's say.
He's, he's, he's back, he's backing into the question of the special ed transportation is
It's right around four hundred.
Four hundred thousand.
Yeah.
Which, which possibly could be reimbursed. No, you, we wouldn't get the full seventy-five percent of four hundred thousand because it's that whole forty-five thousand dollar threshold. You'd have, there'd be factors in there, but there would, it could be a, a real amount of money.
It's good numbers. It's good numbers, that you're obligated to do, that sometimes you can't control.
Yeah, exactly.
And right now, you're having trouble without a town.
And that, that, actually, it's a good point. A lot of our issues with, a lot of, a lot of, a lot of districts are able to transport with local communities. The issue is, you only have one hour to transport a student from pickup to drop-off. And Carver's location is not ideal for the communities that we have to travel to, to be honest with you. Just because we're so south of where most of the sending, the schools are, that really no one travels through Carver to pick up students along the way, or really travels through Carver at all to get to where they're, they're going. Because it's really fifty-eight's the main one, people go up three if they're coming from Wareham, or they go four ninety, I think it's four ninety-five, towards New Bedford Way. So it's just, Carver struggles with that, and that's why we pick up a lot of costs. Like, there's a couple vans that we send with one student on, unfortunately, that comes with that thirty to forty thousand dollar cost that we have no control on, just because of the IEP. And again, that would most likely qualify, depending on the student, that would qualify for reimbursement through circuit breaker.
So where we are right now, again, we're just sharing with you some of the constraints and challenges we have with putting the budget together. Anticipate that, working with Meg and Scott and Brad, that in three to four weeks, we'll have a draft budget numbers together to share with both boards as to what the forecast is gonna be. Again, you know, a couple of these things are unanticipated. We're gonna look at alternative means to have them so they don't have as big of a hit as they appear to have a hit from this discussion. But we just need some time to go over that, so again, in about three to four weeks, we'll be updating this and sharing it with both boards. Any questions? Yes.
With our whole budget process, where does, where are we at with our technical and vocational education relation to the budget?
So that's built into the budget as a straight item. Let's see, of our forty-one point six million dollar budget last year, Old Colony Vote Tech was one point two million dollars. We're anticipating that being closer to one point three this year.
And does that include any upgrades that they plan on doing of that building or whatnot?
So, it does not. Well, I shouldn't say that. We don't know, we don't have oversight how they spend their budget, so if they wanna do some additions or some modifications, they do that within their revenue they have. I think your question that you're alluding to is that at some point, they have made it known that they're looking to do some type of a major renovation, addition, or new building. And should they go forward and do that, that's something, and they vote it, then Carver being a component of that would have to subsidize their, our portion of that debt. What are we, about a third of their budget?
Yeah, I honestly, I don't know what percentage we are in terms of the overall population, in terms of the agreement. I, I would think we're less than a third. I mean, there are student populations over five hundred, and we send a hundred students, so I'd say we're twenty percent. But based on kids, I don't know what. But there's a whole regional agreement, we'd have to pull up and look at the regional agreement and see what our, what our responsibilities are there. I don't know that off, I would have to research that.
If they get, if they get a project approved, they'll get MSBA funding, say that's sixty percent, that leaves forty percent to be divided up by the communities, whatever our agreement says. If our agreement's twenty percent, we would owe twenty percent, which would be multiple millions of dollars over a certain timeframe. That would not, it's not something that's budgeted in our budget, nor is it forecasted in our budget, because it's hypothetical at this point. But they have been making everyone aware that that's something they're looking into.
Okay, I'm through you, Mr. Chair. I know we can't, you know, we're stuck with if and when they do something, but that, to me, just seems our tax, our residents don't get a vote in it. And we're talking potential big bucks on that. I mean, we've got, you know, we voted on the, on the school accelerated repair project, we voted on the ball fields, we voted on our own elementary school, and yet, just because we are part of this school, you know, potentially... It, I'm sorry, that just, that's a kick in the teeth to the taxpayers of Carver that we may get stuck with a four, five, six, seven, eight, ten million dollar school. We don't even get to say how big a school they get to build, or how fancy. And I just have a, you know, there's, I know there's nothing we can do about it, but I'm just voicing a frustration.
And we do jointly between both boards, appoint representatives to their boards and committees. And, you know, I think as, as you guys do that next, is that you may wanna have, you know, them provide more updates as to the progress of that, so we're all aware of what's happening with that. But to your point, Alan, is, you know, that, that's the rules the state have established, and you're absolutely right with your statements.
Wasn't there a town that's sending students there, but not paying anything?
There was one, yeah, I think it's a Cushing.
Yeah, you, you don't have to be part of the regional agreement to send the students to a vocational school. So obviously, and I am no way an expert in this subject, it's not my background in terms of the funding and the operation of vocational school settings. I mean, ultimately, the town of Carver at some point in its history agreed to join the, that went through a process, I'm sure, through the Board of Selectmen, and, and the town voted and agreed to join the agreement, which I think you always have the option to consider whether you're gonna do that or not do that, or continue to be part of the agreement. Though, if you're not part of the agreement, I believe you do pay a higher cost to send students. So, you know, so you don't, yes, they can, if they have room. So I assume those would be the pieces. You know, if, if there was room available and you were not a member of the district, you can send students there at a higher cost.
We might wanna get John Banzo before at least the selectmen, maybe the school committee might wanna do that, just to give an update on where they are in that and their thinking.
Mike, would you happen to know what the voting process is?
I vaguely understand it, but I really don't wanna state it, because I might be off a little bit of it. But, I mean, Scott, jump in here if you think I'm too far off, but generally, is what it is, is their, their board has multiple votes in public hearings and committees and notification. But then they take a vote for submitting an application in, and try to get the thing funded. If they get approval from SBA, then whatever that share is to the towns, I believe it has to go to the towns, and the towns have to vote it up or down, and I don't believe the towns have a say in how it's doing, but for your representatives that are in there.
Gotcha. I can say, the normal, how it usually works out is, they take a, with a one year that they're, they take one year's enrollment numbers, every year they're looking at, and that's how they build it for the rest of the life of the building. So they don't change, like, your assessment for the new building won't be based on enrollment ten years down the road. It's a set number on the date that they pass the vote. That's how I've seen most of them work. It's not to say that you can't agree to something else, I just, that's how I've, from the local ones, I've seen, that's, that's what they want.
They did have a public meeting in the fall, which I believe actually the finance committee was invited to, and I believe the Board of Selectmen and the school committee was invited to. That was a year ago. I attended, some members of, I know Alan Jermaine was there. So they're, in terms of, they're just beginning that process of beginning the investigation.
And I think, God, if that, didn't they get some money to do some preliminary design, or what, is that what they were pursuing?
That's what they were pursuing, but I don't think, I don't know where that stands.
We will get notice, notice will come well before anything's finalized. And they have to do that, it's just that at the end of the day, they, that board, that school committee does make a decision that, in our understanding, will be binding on the communities, if it's part of the agreement.
I don't mean to get us off track, but I think it's something we have to be, at least have in the back of our mind as we're looking, not only at next year's budget, but for future budgets.
Absolutely.
So.
I totally agree with you, Alan, on this subject. But I just think we have to keep that in the back of our heads for the future of what's coming up. The other thing I had is, one of the things on Facebook was about the parking fee. Can you explain why the parking fee is there, and?
Yeah, so the parking fee was instituted three years ago, so it's been in place for three years.
It was before, it got up to three years.
Three years ago, right, well, it said, a parking fee's been in place, so I'll take a step back. There was a parking fee in place as long as twenty-seven years I've been in the district. When I first started here, there was one or two dollars. And when I was the principal for many years, it was ten dollars. When we faced our one point two million dollar shortfall three years ago, the school committee did look at various fees. We looked at, for all kinds of different options to try to close that gap. Those options included reductions in staff, those options included looking at different fees. One of the fees that this committee did agree to at that time was to increase the parking fee from ten dollars to fifty dollars per student. And at the time, it was stated that that money would actually go directly to offset graduation expenses. So that money that's brought into the parking fee, which is fifty dollars per student, has been in place for three years, goes to our graduation account and helps pay for graduation.
Thank you very much.
Can I bring up something else, real quick on the budget? Oh, actually, on grants, actually. Scott and Brad, could you give the, the select board an update on the, on the safe, the school shield grant that we got? Was it twenty-four?
Twenty-four, twenty-two or twenty-four.
Yeah, so we, we received the grant over the summer for about twenty, around twenty-three, twenty-four thousand dollars. And the grant was specifically for school, with school safety, and specifically for the purchase of radios. So we have purchased a whole new radio system for both the elementary school and the middle high school. Those radios have been in place. Basically, the radios we had, we were having some problems internally with just really sound. They were just poor quality, older radios, and we didn't feel like we had enough radios. So this was just a grant that was out there in the reality of all the school safety things that were, were there. Mortar Roller actually had reached out to us and said, you know, nationally, there's all these grant opportunities to fund radios. Obviously, they were interested in us purchasing mortar roller radios, but they made us aware of the grants. We went forward, Mike Schultz, as the building principal, actually took the lead in writing one of the grants. He worked with Brad and a couple other people, and, so we did apply for the grant in the spring. We were notified over the summer that we received the grant, and we've purchased all, all the radios at both buildings. So what it's done for us is improved our communications internally. It's given, and it's increased the number of people who have the ability to have access to communication, so that we'll be able to respond to any incident that's occurring within the building. The other good part of it is, there are four radios, two at the middle high school, one will, one the principal will have, one will be in the main office, two at the elementary school, one the principal will have, one will be in the main office, which are actually police and fire radios. So they will actually be able to have the same bandwidth, they'll be able to get on direct contact to the police or to the fire department. Those radios are more expensive, that's why we, so we only purchased four of those. And what was our total number, how many radios?
Forty-two.
It was four, yes, forty-two total. So split evenly between the two buildings. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you wanna say that?
So, just building on that item, one of the things that our public safety is working with, with also our O and M departments and the school departments, is the townwide radio and communication system upgrades. One of the things that, as Scott's talking about radios, the public safety would say they have forty-eight walkie-talkies and four radios. And, because the radios that they bought are just kind of internal communications, where two in each thing do the external stuff, and need to hit all the different repeaters that are around here. So, there is a capital project that all three chiefs have been working on with the appropriate people to look forward, bringing that to town meeting, to improve security, giving all the issues that are happening in the country. And with some of our new buildings and some of how that all comes, it's just to improve overall communications and upgrade celebrities in the same bandwidth appropriately, who needs to be on that. And it's also enough repeaters inside a building, so there's no dead zones, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So there, I'm just letting everybody know, the public safety is working on that, and that would be a capital project to better fit everybody. This kinda falls into one of the categories we've talked about with our townwide technology, is that this is being incorporated with our townwide technology department, and also our public safety to look at rebuilding the whole system that needs to be done.
I think, I was gonna move on to our last agenda item, which I don't know.
Oh, can I just say two more things? Just on, just on the budget, I was the representative from, when I was on the finance committee for two, three years, to Old Colony. And as a representative from the finance committee there, one of the things that really irked me was that we would get notification of the meeting, it seemed like all the numbers were done, and basically, they just asked us to come in and vote yea or nay on it. You know, and maybe bring the information back, but at that point, they were expecting a vote at that time. I don't know if things have changed in that, since I've been gone, but...
So I would suggest that, again, the school committee and the Board of Selectmen appoint your representatives. If this is a concern of the school committee, I would suggest you write a very short note to your two representatives and ask them to keep you more involved in the process of how that's coming. And therefore, that would be shared with the finance committee, then everybody would have more notice. I think it may take that effort to make sure that that happens, just my suggestion.
No, that's, that's a good one. No, I was just saying, on the, on the portion of being a representative from the finance committee, from, from the town, they ask you to come and approve their budget and all the moves they had made, but they hardly ever gave us any notice of any of the numbers. So I don't know if that's still the same or not, but...
Well, what I'm trying to say too, is in your letter, you know, maybe try to incorporate, they, they collaborate more with the finance committee. I will say, and I'm glad you brought up the finance committee, because, you know, as part of this budget process, we will also be in contact with the finance committee. The finance committee and several members of the school committee and the Board of Selectmen have kind of joined forces to work on a long-term sustainability program, so that is still going on. A lot of research is going in there, Mr. Pratt's out here, done a lot of research. You know, that's going parallel with our budget, but we're not gonna solve sustainability with this year's budget. We're trying to cooperate, some of the things that are coming out of there, but as they complete their analysis over the next six months, you know, it's really for looking at the next ten years, but I would encourage everybody that hasn't been involved with the finance committee to review some of their, their last couple meetings, they've been very informative, and a lot of analysis has been done that actually provides a good education for everybody to understand how our finances work in the town. Obviously, we have people on Facebook that, you know, may state that they know what's going on, but until you've attended two or three finance committees, or at least one presentation with Mr. Pratt, you don't know anything.
That's an understatement, especially that first meeting. My other, my other, not concern, but just suggestion, and maybe this is just an internal suggestion, but it's in Scott's right here. Since we are an agricultural town, and it doesn't seem like the funding is gonna change for us at the state level, does the USDA, do you happen to know if the USDA, does anybody know if they offer any type of educational grants for agricultural towns? Or maybe that's something we can...
I, I actually get a weekly newsletter called Ed Grants, update you on grant possibilities from all over the country. And, you know, some of them, we, some of them we apply for, some of them we qualify, some we don't. The Ed Grants publication is pretty detailed, and it does outline every type of grant. So there are some that come for agricultural communities, they exist, so I, I do, we do see those things.
You just pop into my head, so.
Thank you. Thank you. Moving on to our last item, I think was a Board of, well, a select board question.
So, again, I think what I just heard is there was a question on fees. We had heard that there were some questions on fees, we weren't sure if they were field fees or parking fees.
Parking fees.
I'm just gonna talk a split second on, on field fees. As we know, both the Board of Selectmen and the school committee have kind of delegated that responsibility to the recreation committee. The recreation committee has been meeting with every sports group in town. They have established a fee structure with them, they are in their first year of implementing that, it's going well. What they have committed to all the sports leagues is that, come this November, the recreation committee will review that and report back if there's any changes that need to be done. They have done all their community analysis with other communities, and Carver has, although they're new fees for everybody, they're still the lowest compared to any other community that's out there. So that's in charge of the field piece. Now, why those fees were instituted is that over the years, Carver would maintain its fields, I'm gonna use some grading category, probably at a B level. And then budget cuts came, and, oh, we need some money to fund a teacher or farmer. Oh, we gotta cut the fertilizer accounts, and a few other accounts. And now, if you don't have the fertilizer and the seed, our fields go down to a C category. And then other budget cuts came, and they said, okay, do we cut a DPW or a janitor that's doing fields, or do we keep a teacher? Or a police officer? Well, let's keep the police officer and the teacher, and another cut was coming. And for a while, our field maintenance, despite best efforts, could only be maintained in a level service D, because we didn't have the materials to maintain those.
We also didn't have water for two years.
No, that doesn't help, help either. Last year in town meeting, we did, town meeting authorized a second groundskeeper, fields thing. So now we have two full-time people dedicated to work on fields, that person was hired in July. So now we have an extra person on there, so, and that's, just by that piece, that should move us from a D to a C. there. So, and that's just by that piece, that should move us from a D to a C. And what was determined with all the youth groups and with the Recreation Committee is we, they needed some support because there's still only so much money for fertilizer, grass seed, is that a nominal per usage charge, a user fee would be established townwide and that would be managed by the Recreation Committee to give Dave season toff. It's, the money goes into a separate account. It's only for Dave and John Woods to use on field maintenance with the goal of bringing our fields up to a B level. Now, again, some people may want them at A level like Duxbury, but we don't have Duxbury's money. We're just trying to get it up to a B level. So that's on our field piece. The next piece is on our turf facility, is when that was presented to the Recreation Committee, to the CPC, there was a lot of pushback from CPC, who funded the majority of it, that they were only going to contribute to this one time. And if, you know, and they were concerned about, even though they couldn't pay for the turf, they wanted some commitments that Recreation would establish a fund so that users would contribute to the fund with the goal of building up $800,000, $900,000 over a 10-year period when the carpet had to be done. Carpet has to be replaced every eight to nine years. And, yeah, I'm preaching to the choir, you know all this, but I'm just taking the opportunity to say that. So that was established. I think, Brad, right now, this year, we raised $20-some thousand and that's despite the Triple E and, and so forth. That goes into a dedicated fund that can only be used for turf improvements down the road. That process is also being overseen and will be looked at from a fee structure by the Recreation Committee this November when they analyze that. And they'll come back with any recommendations they have. I know some people said, well, let's eliminate the fee, okay? But then that goes against the will of town meeting when this thing was approved and the CPC for what they were doing. So there has to be some type of a user fee. Clearly, we try to charge, and we do, charge people out of town a significantly larger fee. We charge for-profit AAU programs a larger fee. And then we try to keep that to the minimum that everybody thought was appropriate. These fee analysis and the cost of that was done as the field was going through its approval process with the Field Building Committee. So, again, those two things are already in play. The Recreation Committee's overseeing that. That's been delegated to them. We're going to hear back from them probably in December, how their November meeting came out and see if they want to make any modifications to that. Again, my point that has been made clear is that money is set aside in each separate account. The only other component to fees for, for fields or athletics ties into building use fees, particularly gym fees and everything, and that is managed by the school directly because that all has to have janitors come in and clean out the facility and supervision that's there. So even though that's part of the process, that's still, that's really just managed by Brad through the school program to maintain that. So, you know, again, that's all being done by the Recreation Committee. We've got two or three members of them out here right now and they spent a lot of time discussing this last night at their meeting. Did I miss anything, Brad or Scott?
No, the only thing right now is the money actually for the turf does reside in the school and I have been billing that way.
We established the fee.
What's that?
We established.
We did establish the fee by looking locally about where the charges were and whatnot. For youth pro-
It's in a dedicated account.
It's in a dedicated account just for turf expenses. That the goal of it is to grow to the $600,000, whatever we need in 10 years down the road, hopefully 12, maybe 15, wishful thinking maybe. But along with that, the, the fee structure, we've been working with the youth programs to slowly implement it. Because we came out, let's just say, I think it's $100 for, it's $100 for a weekday rental, let's say, for a youth program. That's a big chunk of change upfront. So we've established, I think they're paying right around $50 per hour right now with the goal of next year going to 75 and the year after 100. So they can implement, implement that in a little bit over time and not get whacked with the full assessment right away.
And part of that was, what the Recreation Committee determined is that by the time these fees were established, one of these youth groups had already established their registration fee. So we kind of missed that window. So that's why there's this slow evolution to get everything on board. And that's why in November, when the Recreation Committee reassesses this, it'll be in a timely manner before the spring starts and bills go out so that everybody can be properly paid for the user analysis and stuff. And again, this is, this is the world we live in. I mean, if, if all of a sudden town meeting or the School Committee or the Board of Selectmen say we'll find other money, great. We'll go back and say, okay, I'm going to go back and what teacher, what fire, what police officer are you going to cut because we're in the pay-go system and we only have so much money? This is how we've been working together to put this together. And I know the Recreation Committee's put a lot of time and effort into it and I think we should all just give them their respect for the work they're doing and come back to, to everybody in December and see where things are at.
So Brad, we also, I know the phone, the phone's probably not ringing off the wall, but we also put a advertising policy that's dedicated towards that as well, correct?
Yes.
And has anything come through on that at all?
No, we need, we need to honestly do a better job on our end of publishing that.
Promoting it, putting it out there, yeah. And I don't know if maybe that's something that the other fields could sort of add in on as well and to maybe expand that towards money for them as well. I'm not sure what, what they've got going on right now, but.
Yeah, I'm not sure if the town has like advertisement policies or whatnot, but.
So, I mean, that ties into another thing that we're looking at right now. I think everybody in this table's been around long enough to know, you know, we talked a little bit today, the success of townwide technology, the success of our facilities and DPW merger given, the success of our Finance Department, the success of our Permitting Department. Now what we're looking to do and is we've got a consultant coming in and helping us is looking at our recreation program, looking at our council and aging program, looking at our library program, looking at our veteran service program, looking at all these other, you know, our health component as relates to opioids and obesity. And, and in each one of these groups, there's an outreach group. So the, the library has a part-time activities director. The COA has a part-time activities director. The Recreation's doing a part-time activities director. We, in essence, do that a little bit with the veteran service. So we're looking at figuring how we can pull all that stuff together and, Jim, to your point, advertising could fall into that to figure out how we promote kind of a centralized newsletter that has all programs the town operates and are available in the promotion of those and whatever it may be. And again, this is big sky stuff right now, but we know that that's the next step we need to do because these four different groups doing their own thing, sometimes they're doing the same thing and they don't even know it. And that's what we're trying to figure out is how we pull all those together to make that work together.
The elementary school ball fields, how is that going maintenance-wise? I know there's a little problems with erosion and whatnot going on. Where is that, is that completed yet or?
So tho, those fields are actually still owned by the construction project, Central Nurseries through November 15th. So right now, they're maintaining those fields, they're planting them, they're overseeing them. They're, they still own those. And then through the building project, it's going to have to be approved that they meet our standard. So that we're going to go through a review process, including having our landscape architects who are part of the project come out to approve them. So technically, the fields themselves, which was phase two of the construction project, is not actually, has not been turned over to the town yet. So we're not, so, so the DPW is not doing any work on those. We're not doing any work on those. It's all still the contractor, Central Nurseries. They came out at the beginning of September and they, I don't know if it's aeration is the right term. They rolled it off, they rolled the whole fields over again. They sliced seeded and they fertilized. And they're, they're responsible to make sure we have appropriate fields by the end of the fall.
And Bob, that was all part of the plan?
Yeah.
As Superintendent said, that was phase two. We don't own phase two. That's still technically under construction. When it's completed, it will meet the specifications like every other project we have in town.
So if they don't, then they would have to continue working on the project.
They'd have to continue coming out, yep. So they, they, there's still money being withheld from Central Nurseries, from the companies in charge of them. So they, they have not been paid for completion of the project and will not be until it meets, meets the standard.
And they're still under the contractor's bond too.
Yep.
So they have to perform. They will. It's just, it's not ready to turn over yet.
What was the date on that, November 11?
I think it's, I think it's November 15th.
Thank you.
Any other questions on fields and fees? If not, I'll ask, anything else from you folks?
Nope.
I'll ask a member of the board if they'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Oh, I'll second that.
Further discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it?
Does the School Committee have any other questions or concerns? Make a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn, School Committee?
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.